2.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Presentation of resale bids of properties IDs 15009, 13424, 14770, 14764, 1480, 14829, and 8728.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Carlos R. C., Mr. Brandon. You should have the various informations for the distributions for each of the parcels in question. There are a couple of parcels that we received multiple bids on, and I can go over those more specifically.
When do you say more parcels? Are you talking about outside of these, Mr. Asse? Or you're just...
As part of these parcels, so for 15009, for instance, we did receive two bids. They were both at 700. One bid is from Georgia, the resident. Another bid is from someone in town from Pariso. There are no improvements. The property in question is in Brundage. It's off Highway 85 and FM 65. It's up to you guys as to whether or not you would like for me to go ahead and reach out to those bidders and tell them, hey, I can give them a 30-day deadline and say, "Give us your best offer." Or you can go ahead and go with one of the $700 bids for that one. And go ahead.
So the amount owed is $44,000. Is that what you're going to get?
So for these parcels, for the most part, yeah, they're quite... The dollar amounts are due are quite low. So, yeah, the amounts that were due as part of Dimmitt County, what was adjudicated is The amount that is cheats, so, well, you know, once everything gets paid off, the county will see an overage towards the general fund of $21.18. So, you know, this... Both of these bids are above minimum bid. They will satisfy the county's claims in full, but the county is certainly well within its rights to go and table this particular one and tell the bidders, hey, close, but not cigar. We'd like a little bit more. Be advised, there's another bidder who's bidded the same amount, so, you know, I can give them, like I said, a 30, 60, whatever day deadline.
And these have all been publicized already, Mr. Asse, in regards to the original owners that they owe that amount?
Yes, so this is all done already in terms of being publicized in the paper. All the... It has been fully adjudicated, went to the courthouse. No takers at the courthouse for the minimum bid, so we struck it off to the county to be held in trust. It has been held in trust now. It's outside of the period in which the property can be redeemed. So at this point in time, this is just a matter of getting it back on the taxable because it's... Right now, it's under exempt status since it was struck off.
So do you worry about...
This is right off, so as you're coming, like, Highway 85 and FM 65. So it's just a little bit inside of that on the right-hand side.
In Brundage?
Yes.
To the right?
Mm-hmm. It's going towards the entrance of that Tertuga Cuatro Ranch.
Right.
Yeah. And you're going to see several of these properties are kind of right around that area.
Let's see. Got... Hold off and see if they'll come up with a bid. Is it along the track? The old road or track?
I don't... I'm not sure.
Did they run it, the road or tracks, across 85, 200, or 200?
I'm not sure if it's off the road or tracks.
Are they close to the road or track? Would that be right? Okay.
It is outside of the entrance for that ranch, and that is a consideration to take into account as well for some of these. For instance, you know, we do have another tract that is just south of that large ranch, and then another tract that is just south of another larger ranch. So, you know, we have not reached out to those larger tract owners to see if they're interested. We're just presenting the bids as they've been received today. For those that do or sit just outside of the border of those, again, that might be another situation where the court may look at table naming. So the other property that there's a similar situation where there's two bids except one's significantly higher than the other is property count 14770. It's also in Brundage. This is just south. This is the one that is just outside of that Cuatro Tertuga Ranch. It's off the Tertuga Road. It's... Bidder one, the higher bid, is 1,000. Bidder two is 450. You know, my only stipulation is to not accepting... You know, I would generally say recommend, you know, these are above minimum bid, so I would generally recommend going ahead and approving the bid for sale. The only caveat, like I said, when I was reviewing the account and looking at the GIS, is that it is just outside of that, in that open area, south of that ranch. So, again, I don't know if it's something that it makes more sense for them to take ownership of it and take part of it. It is outside of their fencing, or like, the general fencing area, so they may not be interested. May not hold any value for them. This bidder obviously is interested and has already presented a bid. All the bids for resale are available on our website, so that's where they were able to get the information. It's been sitting on here. I mean, these properties, if you look at, you know, what these years are going back, I mean, there's quite a few years here. This will help satisfy and get the county hold again and get it back on the rule. So at the end of the day, as long as they keep paying those taxes, then great. The county will see that revenue. I would say, in terms of the first one, since 15009, since there's multiple bids at the 700, I would recommend table naming. I could give them a deadline to get back to us. That way, maybe we can move on to the other ones.
And, Mr. Asse, they're all from the same company, or the same...
A lot.
Dimmitt Land Company LLC?
Oh, yeah, so originally, that was the primary for Dimmitt Land Company LLC was Mr. Mortensen. He passed. He was a surveyor.
I know.
Okay. And so, yeah, right now, we have been in communication with Mr. Mortensen's son and an interested other party. However, we've sent them the information multiple times. They seem to be at an impasse in terms of verifying through Title Company some of the information. So they've had the information for months now, and they have moved.
I'm going to entertain a motion to table and request that, per due, Mr. Asse specifically inquire as to whether we can get the best possible offer from these individuals.
Thank you, Judge. For property count number 13424...
Hold on, Mr. Asse.
Yes, sir.
I got a motion by Commissioner Juana. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ureda. Any other discussion in regards to that, those particular tracks?
Judge, you repeat this one to be taken.
Correct. That is going to be...
One...
14770. One, yes, 14770. 15009. 14764. And 14807. Yes. Then we have... 13424, Mr. Asse.
Yes, Judge. No improvements. This is all off Old Catula Road. The bid is above minimum bid. I recommend selling and approving his bid.
And how many bidders did we have for that one?
One, Judge. Bids at 1,821.
Any discussion? Commissioner? Commissioner? I'm going to go ahead and handle one, the lot 18728. Mr. Asse?
Yes, so this is in the Espanto subdivision, so I'm in the south edge. No improvements. The bid is for $6,000. It's the only bid that was received. I recommend going again and approving it.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the sale of 13424 and 14807. We did, Commissioner, on the table. Motion, it's a motion by Commissioner Juana. Is there a second?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Ureda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Judge, I may have been lost there for a second. For property count 14829, was that tabled as well?
14829.
The bid is 550, and it's lot six and seven, in block 28 in Brundage.
I didn't call that one out, Mr. Asse, because I don't have it in my binder.
Okay. You don't have that one? Okay. Go ahead and table that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Asse.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Court. All right. I'll go ahead and get back with the respective bidders, provide that deadline, and if there's no objections, I'll go ahead and reach out to the larger tract owners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
2.3 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Presentation, potential BSS battery energy storage system, potential tax abatement. Is there anybody here? If you can please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, thank you very much for having us here. My name is Mike Frye. I'm with Kenny Andrews out of Rockwall, Texas.
Marky, can you fix this thing up? But he got it. We'll get it.
That's fine, right there. So I'm here, only half of Samsung CNT, and this is a... And we'd like to, if I may approach you here now, please. So what we have here is a potential battery energy storage project proposed to be built by a developer, Samsung CNT. The name, the name is Rose Corks Best LLC. In Dimmitt County, it's 100 megawatts, would be with two-hour batteries, which would make it 200-megawatt-hours of production, potentially to start construction Q2 of 2024 in COD at the end of 2025, probably fourth quarter. It would have one job probably, but it would not be as hard. It'd be a permanent job, but it wouldn't be full-time in this area. So it'd be for maintenance and things like that. And about 100 construction jobs. The investment would probably be north of probably $110 million, and first-year tax will run $90 million. And looking at the area, is it the Barker Loop in south of FM 1867, or the substation? Currently, they're right there, be next to that. So it's south of Big Wells, two miles. I'm sure it's off from Big Wells, yes. And around 9.5 acres would be the total land that would be used for this. So it wouldn't be, you know, 1,200 or 2,000 acres such as a solar project itself.
You said how many acres?
Around 9.5.
Question?
Is there going to be the Stevenson or the other side?
Oh, Mr. Stroud.
I'm sorry, I can't get you.
Say a little more.
I should ask your question one more time. Any idea?
There's two ranchers for the power plant.
Yes, sir.
The one on this side. I think there's a...
It is...
And then there's Stevenson on this side. What place is it going to be on?
It's due south of the Salud Ranch.
Which is the...
It's a red area.
So are you all familiar with the battery energy storage development?
He enlightened me a little bit. If you would like to...
We don't have anything like that around here.
No, yes.
If you're asking how familiar we are with the actual project, I'm not. I know the location.
Sure, yes, sir.
Other than that, I don't know.
I was going to let Mr. Stroud talk about a battery energy storage system and how it works.
Essentially, what we do is...
If you mind speaking into them.
Essentially, what we do is connect batteries to the substation that's there, and we will power those batteries through the transmission lines. When congestion, or these batteries, I guess, help alleviate congestion, so when we need electricity the most, this will be a supplement to what is working there, what is the right transfer.
And who will you supply the power to?
We have not reached a power verse agreement with anyone as of yet. We have to have an agreement with the DSP, which is AEP, so that will come, I'm certain.
When you say batteries, which size of container are these?
Typically, a... More of a storage container, 40 feet.
What's like a...
Yes, sir.
And as far as the batteries, when the word battery comes up, you're talking, for some reason, you know, people tend to wonder, what kind of chemicals are these batteries? Are there acid in there, or whatever?
Whatever is in there, I know that it's contained within that...
Within the container?
Yes, sir.
Self-contained?
Yes, sir. And I mean, they are measures to alleviate any kind of... If there is...
My question is, is this the same one that the gentleman from Correjo...
Yes, sir.
Same one?
Yes, sir.
In the actual, these batteries are self-contained in the container, and they'll have their own fire system, retardation system. They'll have HVAC in there to keep them cool. So, and I'm sure that they would, if this was built, they would work with your emergency management folks to, you know...
Contain it.
Yes, contain it. And that'd be something probably that... Been a lot of meetings where that, well, we'll sit there and watch it burn and just make sure it doesn't, you know, burn what's around it.
Do you all have any details as far as, like, if each time you purchased a product, do you have a safety data sheet, for example? Material safety data sheet that comes with a specific product? Do you have anything like that for this specific battery pack, or...
We can come up with extra...
You know, that kind of... Well, as from the emergency response standpoint, they would have them a normal preparedance as to how to contain or how to take action if it ever needed to.
Oh, sorry.
And how would the access be being delivered? Is it locked, or a gate, or...
Yes, sir. There is a security device.
Now, is there going to be somebody available to unlock it, or...
Yes, there will be. There will be.
Break the lock?
There will be somebody that is able to access it.
What's, I mean, what's the response for him if there's someone? Depending where he lives, or what?
That's a good question. Yeah, I would imagine it would be depending where he lives.
Due to the fact that sometimes the emergency responders get there before anybody, they usually don't wait with this kind of a lock-in access.
Sure.
But we do need that investigation.
What this does also, it, you know, in nighttime, when electricity usage would pick up, you know, when the sun's not shining or the wind's not blowing, you know, these actually, they supplement, you know, solar energy itself, and they help stabilize the electric grid. So it's good for, you know, if there's any blackouts or things like that, it helps tremendously. That's the purpose of these really.
This is just a presentation?
It is a presentation. We're not...
Yeah, yes, sir.
We're not taking action on it.
The reason I'm asking this is because we had another company that wanted the same thing, and then also, I was under the impression that when we give the abatement, it starts the same year this is working on it, and apparently they don't. So I want to make sure that this time we're talking to an agreement, because five years from now, you're going to build this, or until you finish it, all that time, you haven't paid anything. So I would say, as soon as you get the abatement, it starts right there again.
Right, and typically, what's going on in the solar industry, I'm sure, as you all know, there's a lack of panels available, so that's set everyone back, you know, quite a bit on those projects, and there's a lot of them that, you know, that want to get amended and start the next year or the next. So what we've done here, you know, is really tried to put dates on your work would actually happen, to where it would be built, and in COD at the end of '25, and the abatement would start in '26, with your $90 million value that's on the tax rolls in 2026.
But you're going to start in '25. If you go through with it...
Well, every, the way that the property tax system would work, obviously, you probably know this, is if I'm building something in 2025, it'll hit the tax roll in January '26.
Are you new with this association with the older staff deal?
No, sir, I'm not.
How many years are you asking for a payment?
Well, we hadn't even put an application together. We're just here, you know...
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a presentation.
So, you know, it's... Normally, we would ask for 10 years. Obviously, everything in an abatement is negotiable, and we very much understand that. Just try to, you know, get it built.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Have a good day. No action?
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioner.
No action, Mr. Garcia. 2.4 Approval of Interlocal Agreement Between Meadow Rio Ground Development Council and Dimmitt County.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning. Good morning.
I have a copy of the interlocal.
Give it to Mr. Garcia. I saw that, yeah. I saw the effective September 1st, 2023, and terminates August 31st, 2025. Has there been any changes made on it?
No, no changes. It's just updated three years. The copy that required, Mr. Garcia, it does have the original supplier, so it's passing exactly to me that's in there.
Mr. Garcia, are you housed at the office here in Dimmitt County? Encourage those persons. How many people do you guys have left there?
At the office? At the administrative rooms?
Well, how many administrators do you have left housed? No, not the staff. I'm talking about administration.
You do have a figure of what we're having different policies, so you have all the week, but there are just some houses here that are...
Any questions? Questions? Any questions?
Attachment A, I think it's a type of, the name of the origin of...
Attachment A. Yes, it's an atta... It is a type of. I entertain a motion to authorize the county judge to sign it subject to the correction that I am not a man and I am not Francisco Ponce, that you're going to correct it to reflect Martha Ponce. Motion by Commissioner Ureda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juana. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. If you can get that changed, Mr. Garcia, go to Mr. Garcia so that we can get it signed. Thank you. 2.5 Approval of Interlocal Agreement Between the City of Asherton and Dimmitt County.
Good morning. I just want to...
Good morning, Mr. Hyman.
...asked, and we can continue the interlocal agreement between Dimmitt County and the city. It's been working fine, another assistant from the county.
Any questions? Give me one second, Commissioner. This is going to go through June 30th of 2024, correct?
Here, please. There was no changes? I don't know about the county judge.
They changed it. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Loto Carmona. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Ureda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hyman. 2.6 Discussion and Appropriate Action. Monthly Report from Precinct 2. Constable Mr. Andres Aragula.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Mr. Garcia.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Constable.
Thank you.
2.7, discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Constable Precinct Three, Mr. Robert Bauteras, for the month of June 2023. Good morning, Constable. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion, motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Constable. Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report, Constable Precinct One, Mr. Alfredo Castameda, for the month of June 2023.
Good morning.
Good morning. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Discussion.
Would you get hold of YouTube, YouTube channel? Like Criminal Misery, did you take your job?
If I'm, if I'm able to locate them, yes.
So you wanted to find it?
No. I believe the sheriff's office did find her, though. That same people.
We always see this, he all picked up all and nothing, you know, and all resume and that, but you went to a presidential argument, they sold somebody a call, you know, so if we don't, if you all don't serve, they're gonna keep it better than that.
Oh, no, I agree.
Other discussion? Commissioners? Anything else, Commissioner? Juan, Commissioner Juan, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and appropriate action, monthly report from Constable Precinct Four, Mr. Jose Garban, for the month of May and June 2023.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Garban. 2.10, monthly report from Victory Avenue for the month of June 2023.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
For that month, looks like we had a total of 300, 375 runs. We had zero cattle calls, 62 emergencies, 31 refusals, 47 transfers, 27 health packs, 16 discharges, 92 dialysis runs, 28 doctor's appointments, 44 wound cares, 23 MBAs, and five DOAs.
Any questions?
I have one.
Questions and then, and then motion and then discussion.
On, on the weekends, Mr. Liores, how many units you have?
Two, the two that we have.
And they're both working, right?
Yes.
Or is that correct?
Other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Some motion.
Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries, thank you. 2.11, monthly report from Dimmitt County Golf Course for the month of May 2023.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The amount generated for the month of May was 22,424.64. Y'all should have the expenditure.
The, for the month of May, you said it was what, Mr. Hyman? Questions?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second. Second. Second by Judge Ponce, all in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Motion carries, thank you. 2.12, approval to purchase a vehicle from Red McCombs, estimate at $52,000 for Precinct Three and Six. I'll entertain a motion to table. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, second by? Second by Alonso Carmona, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 2.13, discussion and appropriate action, approval to purchase a 2023 crew pickup truck for Precinct Two.
Judge, and this one I just put it there to save, I was just gonna replace a 2010 that I may give up. We have more issues in it than what we're repairing, so I was going to say we could go ahead and start looking for one, and then I'll put it back on the agenda for approval.
No action, Mr. Garcia? I was gonna ask, 'cause I didn't see the paperwork.
I just wanted to tell them that I'm starting for one.
2.14, discussion and appropriate action, approval for Commissioner Precinct Two, Alonso Carmona, to attend the legislative conference in Austin, Texas, August 30th through the September 1st. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 2.15, discussion and appropriate action, approval to purchase a 2022 truck, four-wheel drive, short wheelbase, 3.4 ton crew cab for the utility department. 2024? Okay, I guess it was a typo, Mr. Garcia should reflect 2024. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second? I mean, Commissioner Alonso Carmona, I apologize. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona, discussion?
Is this going to rule? This is going to, this was going to utilities, to Gary, and the one Gary has is going to one of the units. Yes, or not? On the utility.
Or supervisor?
No.
The humans for the supervisor.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the line department.
Correct.
He's the general supervisor.
Is this coming out of the budget or COs? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Approval to purchase, should that say 2024 as well, Mr. Hyman? Mr. Garcia, the reflection, let it reflect that it should say 2024, not 2022. Approval to purchase a 2024 truck, four-wheel drive, short wheelbase, 3.4 ton crew cab for Precinct One.
That truck's going on, uh, crew truck for Precinct One, to add to the, we have, the truck we have is reported on fourth, 2003, and it's, it's, it's been continually breaking down, and it's not really dependable, we need to take equipment to a dealership or something for repairs, we have to use, uh, the, I, I.
Questions? Is it the same quote? Same quote?
Same, same specific type of truck, same, same.
If only. I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Discussion? Any questions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, approval to renew contract with AgroJim Power LLC for maintenance of generators, good morning.
The last time it was tabled, and I took it to Mr. Gonzalez, he renewed it, and he said it was good, and it was good.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Mina. 2.18, discussion and appropriate action, approval for County Treasurer Oscar Ortiz to attend the 75th Annual County Treasurers Association Conference in McAllen. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 2.19, discussion and appropriate action, travel request reimbursement for Dimmitt County Treasurer Oscar Ortiz for attending the 2023 County Investment Academy in Georgetown, June 12th through the 14th. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Carmona. Any discussion?
You know, we've been given a lot of these, like, recommended, you, Sinamell, or whatever, that they have to get it approved beforehand, but there's been some discussion before about the state and everything else, so it's July, and, and this is done in six months, they have two meetings, we have two meetings to, to get it approved.
I'm asking for a reimbursement because at the time, I knew I wasn't gonna have enough money to go to this training, but then I found out I could make a, because at the time, I wasn't that knowledgeable about how the budget adjustment works, so I was able to make a budget adjustment so I could get reimbursed for the training.
But I'm not just saying you, I can make a lot of them there, asking for reimbursement. And for you, I can understand that, but the other people.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any objection? Motion carries, thank you. 2.20, that is to be taken off, it's a repeat from last, it was inadvertently kept on the agenda, so there's no action taken there. 2.21, approval for Carla Ortiz to attend TC, Texas CDBG Implementation Manual Workshop in Austin. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, approval for Carla Ortiz to attend Homeland Security Exercise Evaluation Program in San Antonio. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Discussion and appropriate action, request travel reimbursement for attending the ICS training on June 17th. Believe this is also for Carla, it should be for a reimbursement in the amount of $40, if I'm correct, just a? On this one, the event occurred before, after the last commissioners' court that we had. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Urenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 2.24, discussion and appropriate action. I lost my place, I'm sorry. Approval for County Judge Matagoma, wanted to attend the TDC Annual Criminal Civil Update September 19th through 22nd in Ramon. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Urenda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 2.25, discussion and approval for Tax Assessor Mary Sandoval and Chief Deputy Clerk Lizeth Martinez to attend the 41st Annual Election Law Seminar and Elections Officials on July 31st through August 2nd in Austin, Texas. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Juan, or, excuse me, Urenda. Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona, or, excuse me, Odena. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, Mr. Garcia, and second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 2.26 Approval for Carlos Pereda to Attend the TCDRS on July 17th in Austin, Texas. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Alonso Carmona seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for County Attorney Daniel Gonzalez to Attend the TDC Annual Criminal Civil Law Update in September 2023 in Ramron, Texas. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 2.28 Discussion and Approval, 365th District Clerk, District Court Clerk Melissa Garcia to Attend the 2023 Professionals Conference in Irving, Texas, July 16th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Judge, I don't only hear two eyes, is there else? Is this a three? I'm not hearing a third eye.
I haven't, um, I haven't. I haven't put it up for vote yet. But he's just saying that he doesn't hear the third eye. But I haven't put it up for vote yet. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm so sorry, we have a discussion, please. Mr. Carmona, I want a discussion, I apologize.
I think he's about.
Okay, is this one divided by the three counties, correct?
Yes.
It's not all from these counties?
No, sir. It's divided directly down.
So our part is what?
One third.
One third of whatever it is?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Garcia, I see there's an airfare and there's also round trip for mileage, are you taking a car and you're flying?
Aye, I can drive into San Antonio for a convenient pass.
This quarter, you got one for the travel, and you got $600 for the luggage?
That's the one.
Which one are you on, because she has two, there's two on the agenda.
Well, there's.
You're looking at, yes, she's, she's the same person. We're, right now, we're approving the first one, Commissioner Juan, which is the, for her to go to, um, the court professionals, which is on this page. Yes, so. Yeah, because she's, she's going to two of them. So, this is what I was asking about, because there's airfare and there's travel, that's what I was asking.
Yes, you can proceed, I believe you put the whole to the left, and then the one-third, which is in county, on the right, because slash, will it have something?
Your drive to San Antonio flight from there to Irving?
Yes.
I think on the, on the travel voucher, it should reflect miles to, from Eagle Pass to San Antonio. That's probably why you're confused.
I apologize, um, I didn't catch that, I apologize for that, I haven't did that, and I believe you might have submitted the, the Google Maps as a, as a request, I apologize.
Because it, it looks like you're flying and driving.
Yes, yes, I agree. Uh, well, actually, I believe it says round trip mileage to San Antonio, Texas, there are three miles.
Because that's, that's the round trip, from Eagle Pass to San Antonio. It's just that on the voucher, it says Irving. That's why you're, you're asking. Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 2.29 Discussion and Approval for 365th District Court Clerk Melissa Garcia to Attend the 2023 LGS Annual Conference in Irving, Texas. That's the second one, Commissioner Juan. The one, the second one that you were looking at. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. 3.1 Law Enforcement Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for Meredith Martin and Norma Puente to Attend Crime Record Conference in San Marcos, July 10th through the 14th. Their record should reflect that it's Martin, not Martina.
Also, it's in San Antonio, not San Marcos.
San Antonio, not San Marcos, Mr. Garcia. Let the record reflect that, please. Do we have that information? Sheriff, we don't have anything on that.
It should have been, was there anything generated?
Oh, it's back here.
Is it out of order?
It's out of there.
Okay. I see it. The one for Ms. Puente's in here too?
It is.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena, discussion? No discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 3.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for Sheriff Chris Casamita to Attend the Texas Border Sheriff's Coalition in San Diego, California, on September 24th, 26th, 2023. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Odena.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, discussion?
Sheriff, what?
Go ahead, discussion.
What's this, uh, border coalition?
The same one, the sheriff's coalition started here in Texas, but then they also expanded to the western sheriff's coalition, goes from Brownsville away to San Diego, California, all the sheriffs. But even, we've been members of it for, I'm not sure, past, I think since Doug Sample, when it was created, when he was here. We've been members of it, I attended several, the last one I attended was in Sierra Vista, like maybe three years ago, went to that one, Arizona.
And it was held in Mexico?
Yes, correct, yes, sir. Sometimes it'll be held in, in Brownsville or South by the Island, and depends which agency picks it up. The only reason I put it early also is because I think they only have so many rooms that are 161. After that, block rate don't go up, regular price, that's why I put it early, just to take advantage of that.
Is this the same one, she forgot the sheriff member someone to do?
It was approved, but it didn't show up. It's in somebody else.
That's correct. It's Sierra Vista, last year was Sierra Vista, Arizona?
I can reach it.
Yeah.
Yes, and one of those, another deputy, I believe, went also, I'm not sure who the other deputy was.
No. He was approved.
This one, mainly, sometimes grants, they have the area from the borders, any issues with the border from Brownsville to California, if you have one that, provide trainees, but a lot of it also, they deal with grants, work with the governor's office.
I was trying to ask, is, even though we're, hopefully we'll get the home star.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else that you can give for them? I mean, being that now it's from California, where is it possible?
That's, I'm gonna, yeah, go check, I, I know before, they would get it with linebacker, I think, they would get that grant through them, so I'm not sure if there's any funding through that. When it first started, it was through the linebacker program, it's when the coalition was started. And, I'll drive, I think it's an 18-hour drive, so I'll try to speed it a little bit.
You're gonna, you're gonna drive with me?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries.
You have something that has to do with the 49x.
That's gonna be a hard, hard knock. The 3.3 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval between Demet County Jail and Medical Doctor Contract.
I believe on this one, judge would change also, number four, let's go for the word. I believe you all requested that, uh, you need trainings that he goes to, he within the state of Texas, that's what you change on here, with the state of Texas.
Also, we, um, we're taking off the, that one training regarding the, him attending in Las Vegas or something to that effect, I believe.
Yes, I believe on number four, the agreement.
We took it off, correct, Ms. Puente? Yes.
This is the new.
This is the new one, correct? Yes. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, discussion?
Sheriff. I'm, I'm, uh, the pandemic just take correct, no, no, no increase, like the last time.
No, everything stays the same, so I don't know what it changed with the trend.
You correct in that problem we had last year with the attorneys, correct? They're supposed to be during hours, and, and they're supposed to be.
Yes.
And then you're just, we went to the jail, and then you're taking them, and they send them out?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, last year, we had a new problem with that.
Basically, I have a third payment yesterday, we had an impact that was, didn't, since the hospital, who backed up, what they were in, too, uh.
Just wanted to make sure, because, uh, apparently, sometimes they weren't there, and, and, or whatever, and, you know, and they're supposed to be there, and it almost.
That's correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 3.4 Discussion and Appropriate Action to Approve the Home Star Grant Resolution. This is just a resolution for us to be able to include it in the grant that we're applying, as you all know, through the county judge's office, we are applying and allowing the county judge to administer the Operation Home Star Grant, in which we are trying to iron up the last of the grant so that we can submit for approval. This is just a resolution to that effect. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
On the report, did we put it to the next one for the citations and?
That'll be at the end of Montiel, sir.
Okay, alright, because we're having, we went live with the new system, and we're not able to bring anything out, so hopefully by next, we should have that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Sheriff. 4.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action and Budget Adjustment Within JP Precinct One Department. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 4.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Within the Sanitation Department. Motion by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Is there a second? Uh, Juan Carmona, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Budget Adjustment Within Constable Precinct Two Department. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena, discussion?
Judge, uh, can you put it on capital equipment, or, why is he not using that money for that? Is he too much to have it there?
Um, he's asking to move from data processing to capital equipment, so he's asking, does he not have money in his capital equipment, or he has too much money in data processing?
No, he needs, that's the, the long term that Joe was talking about, that Joe talked about earlier in the year.
I understand, but he's taking out a lot of.
It can be on the year right now, so.
So he, there's sufficient funds in the data processing?
Yeah, that's the easiest thing to do right now.
So we need to cut it down?
No, 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 this, because there's no, there was no data processing charges this year.
I understand.
So we're just, just for this year, we're moving it to capital equipment.
And also, we're moving with the data processing to the Southern Software Corp.
So it'll be next year.
Because the sheriff's office, yeah.
And we did budget for next year. It's just this year we don't need it, so that's why you moved it, yeah.
Because he's not going to be with Intech anymore. Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Discussion and Appropriate Action Budget Adjustment Within Constable Precinct Three.
So move.
Oh, $72. Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Budget adjustment within the Parks Department.
Judge, I'm, I'm taking some of the, from the capital equipment for the oil and supply areas for the parks, that we've been doing a lot of work on here, and I've been going
Any, I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there objection? Motion carries. But, discussion appropriate action, budget adjustment within the Public Facilities Department.
It's going to be Public Facilities Agenda.
Exactly.
So we play back, would you put on that public?
We're gonna take it off, and it's gonna be, we're gonna put that on the Public Facilities Agenda. 4.7, discussion and appropriate action, budget amendment from utility to golf course.
Uh, there was a merit here, but what it was done, this is, it's within the golf course.
Within the golf course?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Juan, I mean Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Discussion? You don't need the professional service? I thought you were doing, gonna pay David with that.
We still have some in there.
Okay.
Just to take all the way, just use it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. 4.8, can be removed, the budget adjustment for the county judge, that was inadvertently left there from the last, so that's no action. 4.9, discussion and appropriate action, budget adjustment within the Treasurers Department.
Motion, approved?
Give me one second, oh, I was looking at the wrong one. Motion to approve by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena. Any discussion?
Do we have money, or we don't have money? What, what is it for the IT?
This is for the, remember when you all gave us the, the pay for the overtime, that's what this is, this is to pay the overtime.
No, it's, this, this says to pay for equipment and supplies. It's a new computer.
That one was for, I think it was a previous mission.
What would you do?
But there is such a new IT department for equipment.
They told me not.
We just looked at it Friday.
Well, we need to make sure that we're better advised, Mr. Pereda, or that IT we better advise, because I know that my office called because of my monitor's messing up again, and I know that they said there's no money in IT.
IT possibly is.
Where? Huh? Equipment. Marky, uh, what you did, I'm sorry, Judge.
Yeah, we, we have this quote ready, right, Oscar, we have this quote ready, we just didn't know to use which PO.
What?
No. We have this quote ready, he just didn't know if we were gonna pay for it, or, or he was gonna pay.
Anything with IT, we don't mind, you know, we have to pay, even the judges, even the other deputy, if we have it. So, give it to Mr. Pereda, and let him show you where it says, that way we can go forward.
But you know what, we'll have to prove that budget, so we can take it out of the treasurer's office, and that would help, we still have.
No, 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 he said there was enough money.
There is, no, there is, I'm just saying, if we did, that way he can do more, with what he's got, for the 20,000.
Right. When you tell me that there's enough money, we don't have to take money elsewhere, because that's the reason I asked you a while ago.
That's fine, you don't have to, but I'm just saying, in order to do more, you can take it, have this from there, and then that would give us.
So you can, you can sort of leave IT for the rest of the month?
You can see somebody got the budget, and he's got the money, he's got it.
See, you make me look back, because I, I, I say sometimes, we don't have no money, now you're saying that we have money.
Yeah, we, we do have the quote for his PC, but we, we did ask him, if you do want us to order it, you have to ask Carmona first, so we were waiting on, on next step.
I'm not worried about that.
He's saying that Mr. Pereda's telling him there's no money, so that he tells you guys there's no money, and then you tell.
But Commissioner, he tells us that, so we won't spend money. He doesn't, he's not, he doesn't, I just wanna be on the same page as you are, that we have money, and we can afford to buy whatever we need to buy, okay?
Yes, sir.
So we're on the same page, that there is money in the IT department, so then we need not to take action on this budget adjustment, is what you're saying?
No, well, yes, you don't have to, but I would recommend you do, because that would give you more money, that, that gives the IT more money.
I know, but you're not moving into IT, you're moving it within the treasurer's budget.
Right, so we doesn't have to take it out of his budget.
Basically, let me pay for it, so other people can use IT for it.
I know, but Commissioner Carmona was being so generous, and was gonna buy it.
I agree, but I mean.
But then you, if Commissioner Carmona paid for it, may you have to report it here, right?
No.
No? It's through his IT department.
Oh, yeah.
And he has that authority.
He can do it there.
Yeah, exactly, Pereda just confused everybody. So I'm gonna entertain a motion not to take any action for 4.9, which is a budget adjustment. You'll entertain a motion?
So move.
So we do order this PC with, with the money?
Correct. And, the second was by Odena, any other discussion?
Yeah, so that, uh.
No action, I apologize, no action. 4.9 is the claim docket. In the general fund, it's $1,128,529.92. Are you bringing me a change?
No.
Dimmitt County Grants, $49.27.
Just the precinct two.
Dimmitt County Airport, $245.32. Dimmitt County Golf Course, $13,633.08. Courthouse Security, $3,134.59. Records Management, County Clerks, $1,069.27. Utilities, $82,689.25. Equitable sharing forfeiture and seizures, $5,842.48. Rodeo Arena, $514. Stone Garden, $64,133.08. C-Tiv Tech Dot, $2 million. Dimmitt County Payroll, $515,367.12. COs 2015, $156,172.21. COs 2020, $82,702.67. COs 2021, $223,784. And American Rescue Plan, $278,900, for a grant total of $4,556,767.26. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, discussion?
Mr. Pereda, what are you paying with the, the, the?
That was my question.
Huh?
I was gonna ask that question.
Yes, they are.
But, why are we paying it out of there, that, that's totally different.
No, that's where he, that's where the, our, so previous.
The previous county judge.
Data from there.
Not this county judge.
I think next time, advise us where we're gonna get it from. Because this, this money was supposed to be left there for something else, other than the, the buildings?
No, it's for infrastructure.
And so you can use it for infrastructure?
I mean, it's what we were using for. We did, we built these.
How did you pay for yours, out of there too?
Yes. It was on mine.
Well, no, no, um, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but the judge also still signed over there.
Roof?
Yes. And he got, he could outweigh, assign, the, the building there in front of the courthouse also from there, he just never got around to doing that.
Standing over it, to say, let's advise him next time.
He did, I'm gonna do it.
I, I think it was coming out of there, whenever, which is approved, was rebuilt, I mean, to fix them, that was it. You never, whenever, when they were, never, never notified where the money was coming. I thought it was coming from the, the, uh, the capital equipment and all that other stuff.
The general fund? The general fund?
General fund, yeah.
So he's saying that he knew that about, there was, it was approved to fix the roofs, but he's saying he was never advised that the money was gonna be, that the renovations were gonna be from that fund.
Right? Alex, I know, did you know?
I don't remember, I, I just remember the, the fact that we spoke about the rehearse rates and the pay rates.
Oh, and?
Yeah, because the, the judge did mention.
So always, for next time, let's find out where the money's coming, always getting.
And it, like I said, they had also projected to use, to do this, the building in front of the courthouse, they used, and do, fix their roof, the same, they had done that, and it was gonna keep coming from there too.
They are, there's still a lot of money in the COs, right? It was the judge's side, the ex judge.
No, sir, there is not. No, sir, there's not. When I came in, when I came in, almost, and Mr. Pereda can attest to this, because I asked for those numbers, and when I came in, the county judges, the previous county judges' COs were almost depleted, I don't have any money.
Not that much.
No, and that's why I was going to you guys, I was gonna request for you guys to let me borrow from your COs to try to do the sports complex, because I had no money, but instead, we're gonna go through a different route, a different channel, because I didn't wanna bother you guys to let me borrow money.
Alright.
Well, thank you so much, but.
Thirty percent.
But, Commissioner, there is not money in the county judge's COs.
So how much is that, over on the 15?
15, not that much, it's not.
The toll, the toll?
It has the theme, I mean, I.
That's the end goal, correct, the 15?
Yes, there's.
There's enough money there to pay for whatever's going on, it's been encumbered. There might be money cash, but it's encumbered, so whenever you all assign, the land, let's suppose, any work done, any project, we encumber that money.
But you said the magic word, work, and there isn't any work.
I know, but it's on hold, so it's on hold, until you all approve it to be paid, then it gets paid, but in the meantime, it's encumbered. It's already spoken for.
Yeah, it's allocated.
It's already allocated, we can't use it because they've already put it for that.
So if you all work to do another project and get it out there, then we'd be overdrawn on that project.
Correct.
That's you. And I know how to work with all the suggestions.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. Any matters in executive session?
Judge, I have one, it's regarding personnel and possibly legal issues.
Okay. I'm gonna, the time's 11:27, I'm gonna call for executive session in regards to personnels, possible legal matters. The time's 11:45, Mr. Garcia, we're back from executive session, there was no action taken. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Odena. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The time is 11:45, and I'm calling the meeting to order for the Public Facilities meeting. 1.2, roll call, let the record reflect. Commissioner Odena, Commissioner Alonso Carmona, Commissioner Juan Carmona, and Judge Martha Fonse present, with one absent, being Commissioner Valeri Duocava. I'll entertain a motion, 1.3, approval of minutes of regular meeting, June 30th.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
2.1, discussion and appropriate action, new business.
Judge, we're a part of, just by, I'm making some adjustments on the budget.
On the budget?
Also, I called another company, but I haven't responded, and I don't think this, they're considered very expensive, they, they cut the computers, so I'm trying to find somebody that can cut the computers, so they can, for, for, conditions, a lot cheap for waiting, for getting paid right now.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't come down, like, $1,000 or $6,000, except for one call, so I'm trying to find somebody.
Any discussion? No action? An update by Commissioner Carmona. 2.2, I'm gonna add Mr. Garcia, and that's gonna be the discussion appropriate action, budget adjustment within facility, Public Facilities Department. Mr. Pereda?
Yes, sir.
I've been called man so many days, so many times today, sir. I don't know. Need to be, maybe I need to come dressed like a man, so I can really be called a man. Mr. Pereda?
You don't have the improvement, the improvement to maintenance and repair building.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Juan Carmona. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. 3.1, claim docket, the public, public safety is $7,895.30. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Odena, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any discussion?
Judge, I'm, uh, just for information, I'm, pretty close, so you can come and give that report on the public system, because I, I really shouldn't be asking you, but
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Odena, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everybody. This meeting has adjourned, Mr.